Time being 6:00 PM, Monday, November 19th, 2018. I'd like to have welcome everybody here to the Freetown Board of Selectments meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and re-degenere. Is anybody recording the meeting?
Free cam.
Free cam. 6:00 PM called to order, 6:00 PM meet with Soil Board, 6:00 PM public hearing in conjunction with Board of Assessors relative to selection of the residential factor to determine the percentage of tax burden to be borne by each class of property. Board of Selectmen approve Chapter 90 project request for Oaklawn Road and Cliff Drive as submitted by Highway Surveyor Charles Mackumber. Approve agreement with Gravity Construction Inc. for drainage improvements on Oaklawn and Road and Cliff Drive. Approve snowplow contracts for 2018-19 snow and ice season for Mark St. Laurent and Andre Maderas Souza. Discuss act on creation of open space committee. Approve and sign public notice for 2019 annual town election. Sign certificate of votes for registry of deeds of county commissioner position in the state election as submitted by Town Clerk Jacqueline Brown. Vote to allow Town Administrator David Demarche to sign all lease documents regarding 2019 Chevrolet Tahoe and 2018 Dodge Durango. Approve ambulance abadements write-off for October 2018 as submitted by Fire Chief Gary Sylvia. Approve acceptable valuable- valuability preparedness grant as submitted by Planning Technician Christopher McKee. Sign agreement with Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District, SERPAD, for technical assistance for the creation of the MVP grant. Approve Board of Selectmen minutes for meeting on November 5th and November 14th, 2018. Discuss approved reserve fund transfer request from Freetown Elementary School Hot Water Boiler as submitted by Town Administrator David Demarche. Discuss approved architectural services for the installation of an external commercial freezer box at Council on Agent Multipurpose Senior Center. Town Administrator's report. Acknowledgement of receipt of 2019 Class 2 and Class 3 motor vehicle graveyard, auctioneer, entertainment, and assorted liquor license renewals. Personnel board, appoint Christopher McKay as Soil Clerk, Soil Board Clerk effective November 19th, 2018. Sign change of status form for Linda Ramirez, Ramidis, Senior Clerk, part-time, effective December 11th, 2018. New business, special town election Saturday, December 1st, Freetown Elementary School Gymnasium, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Dates are upcoming Board of Selectmen's meetings, Monday, December 3rd, Monday to 7:17, Monday, January 7th, Tuesday, January 22nd. Executive session, Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A4, to discuss deployment of strategy, of our strategy regarding security personnel. Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body and the Chair so declares. Jeremy Bernato versus Town of Freetown Highway Department, Town of Freetown Board of Selectmen, Charles Mackumber. Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigation position of a public body and the Chair so declares. Excel Recycling LLC versus Town of Freetown. So first thing on the agenda is meet with the Soil Board.
Make a motion to open the Soil Board meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to open the Soil Board meeting. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Soil Board meeting is now open. Do we have a chair from the last one?
No.
Okay. One of the reasons you're here tonight is so we can have a chair for the next one.
What are our options?
Not it.
I'll motion Kevin Dismanus.
Not it.
Chair of the Soil Board.
Second. Sorry, buddy.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Session, please.
Kevin, do you accept the nomination to as Chair of the Soil Board?
As long as no one else wants it.
Kevin has his thumb on the hot beat of Freetown with all the...
All the dirt.
All the hats that he wears, so I think it'd be great to have him as our Chairman.
Well, thank you.
Absolutely agree. Couldn't be a better person for it. And since his, well, that's later on, but since his clerk is going to be the clerk of the Soil Board.
Just makes sense.
And in the globe. Hearing none, no other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will now turn the meeting over to the Chair of the Soil Board.
What, I'm sorry?
Yes, now you're meeting.
Oh, okay, well, thanks for everybody for coming tonight.
We need to get used to it.
Yeah.
We need a, we need a, um, a meeting date so we can go out and do site inspections.
What's your meeting dates on Mondays in December?
Mondays in December?
Whatever your meeting dates.
First and third.
Right. Because our meeting is the 17th.
We usually do a Sunday, right? Drive around and do it on Sunday?
Yeah, yeah, we have Concom on the 17th, I believe.
I will, I...
You shouldn't. I shouldn't do that?
Boo hoo. Sorry, I will not be back on the 17th.
That's why we're going to do it two weeks earlier.
Oh, damn.
So we have a third...
It's relatively painless.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Third and 17th.
Yeah, you want to do the third? Can people make the third, is that it?
Yeah.
What do you do in the third?
I mean, on the second, we'll do inspections.
We'll do inspection on the second.
Yeah, we'll have the meeting on the third.
Yeah, that works.
Six o'clock during your regularly scheduled meeting.
Yeah, we're here any hour.
Because I know you guys have a huge agenda, but you have normal meetings.
Yes.
We don't want to clutter it.
It seems like they're getting longer and longer, so...
So that's why we'll do six o'clock on that night.
Perfect. And clerk, are we...
Well, once you guys do that, I'll, I'll get with him.
Okay. Do you have an objection to Christopher, the clerk?
No, and I've spoken with him and it's fine, you know, let's face it, it's not that many hours a year, it's maybe once or twice a year, so it's really...
Okay. So do you have any other business?
I don't.
What time do you want to go on the second?
We usually go, what, 10?
What time are we meeting for breakfast? Because usually breakfast then we eat, so whatever works.
Uh, is 10 too, is 10 good for everybody on Sunday?
That's fine.
All right, let's do the 10 o'clock.
I do a really...
I mean...
Yeah, okay. 10 o'clock's fine, you'll go with 10 o'clock on Sundays, right?
Yeah, I'll see to that.
Yeah, okay, so 10 o'clock on the second.
Perfect.
We'll meet at Town Hall, I'll, I'll have Chris, in the meantime, going to have to send out the permit renewal forms, he'll have to let the applicants know when the site inspections are going to be, and I'll try and get him to speak, show where the files are and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, but we closed, I think we closed at least one last year, right?
Right, 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 right.
So there's only a few we're working with now.
That's it.
Took us a half an hour last night. It's more time driving around than it is.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
All right, so that being said, if there's no other business before the Soil Board, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Motion seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close to staying, I stand.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Hello, you guys get through the big work.
Thank you.
They've been voted into this challenge.
Did you see how that worked?
I'm good, how are you?
Public meeting, public hearing in conjunction with the Board of Assessors. How are we doing tonight?
Fine, how are you? How's the Board of Selectmen tonight?
Excellent. Lisa's a little grumpy because it's a holiday weekend, it's a busy week for her, but...
A lot of stuff going on.
Oh, you ain't kidding, huh?
I'm sure, you are, how's it too? Okay.
I don't know if, I know that you received the information from the Board of Assessors, I don't know if anyone has any questions or need further clarification on anything, or if you want me to...
Just to review, we were at, we've been at 1.43 percent for the last three years?
Six, almost, no.
2014.
Five years so far, and this would be our six.
All right. It's not broke, don't fix it.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I'll make a motion to keep the shift as presented at the 1.43.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. So tomorrow...
No, we called the Department of Revenue, that was the only hangup because we had to vote on December 1st.
Okay.
We cannot set the tax rate until after that vote, so the very next day, we can hit the button that sends all the paperwork to Boston, but we have to wait for that.
Okay, is that going to...
It's not going to change anything.
Okay.
Because it's all coming from other sources, not taxation.
Mm-hmm.
It's not going to change a thing.
Okay, perfect. And...
But the LA 5, they can sign the LA 5.
I was just going to ask that, that was my next question.
That, this has no bearing on the LA 5.
You could sign that.
Okay, perfect, so...
So we can get it done before, and then when we know one way or the other on the...
I'm going away for a couple of days for the holiday, yeah, so on Monday I'll come back and we'll, I'll get Jackie to give you your passwords and we'll sign it and get that all done.
That works.
Get that in, yeah. So, but moving on.
And no delay in sending out the bills or anything like that?
Nope.
Perfect, okay.
Nope, we don't believe there'll be any problem.
Awesome.
So find the line and circle it and initial it. 1.43, yeah. Please.
One for Charlie.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Happy holiday.
Chuck is here. Approve Chapter 90 project request for Oaklawn Road and Cliff Drive as submitted by Charles Mackumber. Come on down, Chuck.
As you just said, we're going to do some drainage work on Oaklawn Road and Cliff Drive. Oaklawn Road, we're requesting $147,287.52. And Cliff Drive, we're looking at $97,798.23. We, after these projects are done, we have about $100,000, $102,000 left in Chapter 90.
Is this a remediation or is this a new install?
It's a new install.
New install.
Oaklawn has no drainage at all, and there's a problem, the last two houses on the street, we always fight ice dams, like really bad.
Yeah.
So, that's take care of that. And then Cliff Drive, it's a son of a bitch, it's the drainage that's there was put on, put in in probably the 50s by the homeowners, it's subpar, and we have a lot of issues with two or three houses along that stretch of road.
So these are going to prevent basically ice buildups in those areas, flooding in that house on Oaklawn?
Yeah, Cliff Drive is more of a flooding issue, and, because all the houses on the water side are downgrade of the road, and they just eat a ton of water, so this is going to alleviate that problem in that one section of Cliff Drive.
Any questions from the Board?
Yes, Chuck?
Yes, sir.
This is going to be done all by a private contract?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I have a question. When we came in for the design phase, Bob asked you if it was going to be done by your crew, and you said yes.
Well, I don't remember saying much on it, not, not Chapter 90 work. Not, I don't, again, we're, we're going to tackle, we tackled three projects with the design phase. Oaklawn, Cliff Drive, and Nottingham Way. We are going to do Nottingham Way in-house. These projects are going out, that's why we, we put it up to bid, we, we went through that whole procedure.
Well, I, I remember it, it's otherwise.
Okay, I'm not going to argue with you, I'm just, it's, it's above the scope of what we can handle in-house.
I'm not going to say that I have any expertise at all in drainage, but you're, it is kind of a routine construction project, is it not?
Um, no, Oaklawn's a pretty sizable project, when it's all said and done. Cliff Drive, and where we don't have a trench box or anything like that, it really makes a whole lot more sense to find this project out.
When was the last time we sent something out to bid like this? Because...
All the time. The last drainage project that we put out, um, hmm, I can't tell you, I would say probably the causeway on going into a smart base source. That was less than $10,000, and we just made three phone calls, and he's ended up doing that.
Right, so we never went through a big contract like this, because I don't remember ever seeing a contract like in this sudden death for $245,000?
For drainage, no, because we, we, as a rule, the drainage that we have is, is suitable. I said Oaklawn was never, never had any drainage put on, and Cliff Drive is just something that's, people are buying these cottages and developing, developing them into these huge homes, and they will not stand for the amount of water that's, that's happening. Um, yeah, so it just needs to get done. Oaklawn, well, they're both would be done this winter. I said we put the project up to bid, Gravity came in as the low bidder, I think we had three bidders on the project, if you believe, and GPI checked out Gravity, and they have a pretty good record, so that's where we're going.
All right, maybe, maybe what we do in the future is ask for an update of where all the Chapter 90 money, like, you know, projects, and then we'll know better, because I have no idea right now either.
This year with Chapter 90 money, we, we resurfaced Locust Street, we resurfaced Forge Road, and then we've got these two drainage projects.
Right, but instead of maybe, and I think we've talked about this before, like maybe a plan of, of two years or three years, not even knowing where our capital, we're not even knowing where our Chapter 90 money is going to be, but at least we have a list of projects that, you know, that we're all aware of.
They have that tomorrow, I mean, I've got it on my desk pretty much.
Okay.
In my, I mean, it changes, if we have a bad winter, that may change the priority list, if a certain road falls apart during the course of the winter, but as we pretty much, the plan that we came up with five years ago, we are dead on with our, not so much these drainage projects, but the road resurfacing, we're, we're dead on for that schedule to be created five years ago.
Do you have a rotating cycle as, as things where you...
Pretty, pretty much, again, but, but it has to be, every road is different. Forge Road and Locust Street...
Want to travel on?
I can chip seal, because there's no big truck traffic. I can't chip seal Bradley Road, a lot of truck traffic. I can't chip seal, I mean, I can't...
South Main Street.
South Main Street, you know, and that changes. We've got a culprit that we're going to have to probably replace next spring, that's kind of a surprise, that's probably, that potentially could heat up all the Chapter 90's next year. That's up on Oaklawn Road, I think that's very long. We've looked at that, we're kind of in the initial stages of engineering that as we speak, so, yeah. It's, it's, the, the, the road treatment, so, the road surface treatment, there's a plan for that. The drainage things, like I said, this is, this is kind of a, this doesn't happen very often, because most of the drainage is already there in place. Most of the drainage infrastructure's been in this town for 60 years, so, Cliff Drive is basically just adding to an area that lacks, and Oaklawn is adding because there was never any drainage on Oaklawn. And if you're familiar with the area, it's got a very high water table, and the problem with Oaklawn is the ice dam. There's water that flows on that road year-round, so, just needs to be taken care of.
Any other comments, questions from the Board?
Yeah, but the Nottingham Drive project, your crew's going to do?
Mm-hmm.
When are they going to do that?
As soon as I get a crew that shows up to work. I have two man crew today, so that should be a one-day project, that's basically just putting in a subdrain and tying into the existing drainage that's there, so that should take a day. This time of year, we've got to play with the weather and make sure I have a crew that comes to work.
Any other questions, concerns?
Hmm.
I'll extend the motion.
So, is the amount up to 245, oh, 85, 75?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stein or abstain?
Stein.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Have a great night. Approve agreement for Grav, with Gravity Instruct, Construction Inc. for drainage improvements for Oaklawn Drive and Cliff Drive.
Do I have a motion to sign the, signing agreement?
Motion to sign.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion to sign the agreement with Oaklawn Dr, with Gravity Construction? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain, thank you. Approve snowplow contracts, 2018-19...
May I? Can we take care of the school since they're way at the bottom somewhere? Discuss and approve reserve fund transfer request for Freetown Elementary School Hot Water Boiler?
I'll take that out of order. Where are we here?
Thank you. It's way at the bottom. Before we get to the second page.
It's way, it's like way down to...
I see, okay. Come on up. Please introduce yourself for the, for the camera, for the Board.
Sure, Ashley Loops, Director of Finance, Freetown Regional, Freetown Regional School District.
Oaklawn.
Thank you.
So what do we need to do here? What happened?
Upon the audit of the Freetown Elementary School, they condemned the hot water boiler. I sent over an email to David, I think he shared that with the Board. It was the insurance company for the Town of Freetown, it wasn't the school's insurance company. They went in and said that it needed to be repaired and needed to be remediated. Bob went out and got quotes to get it repaired, and the vendors were not confident that the repair would fix the problem, and they recommended a replacement. For the cost, the replacement is less than $1,000 more, so I'm here in front of you.
We're always at the bottom in my, do you have the number off the top of your head?
I think that was 14, 5?
For the...
Replacement. It's 13, I don't know, I think they're back.
It was 12.
It was 13, 5 for the new, 12,418 for the re-repair.
That's correct.
And you're looking for emergency fund transfer for the...
Finance Committee, yeah, because you don't have money to satisfy for that purpose.
Any questions from the Board?
Makes sense to me.
Um, in the past, they've used the E and D for this. Is that something the Board wants them towards, or do we want to just send it to Finance for their recommendation to for emergency fund transfer?
The E and D has $218,414 in the account.
We own the building, so I think, I think it falls into us, and I think there's a $5,000, anything below by the Regional School District will take care of, anything above that would have to come back to the Board of Selectmen into the town, I think that's part of the regional school agreement.
It was $5,000.
Yep.
It is.
Should we explore whether there is insurance to cover that? I guess it's the other thing.
Sure, we can process a claim and move forward that way as well. I'll take that back to Bob.
It would be my, our insurance company?
Yeah, Maya.
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 I mean, I, I mean, for such a small amount of money, I'm not really sure if he whoos us to go for insurance, but I mean, we can always look at it.
It's probably going to be a more of a maintenance issue than it is going to be...
No catastrophic failure, wasn't like you had burst pipe or anything.
Right, I mean, it's been there for so long already, I don't remember replacing the boiler when we went through the school, so I don't think it's going to change for a while.
So I'll entertain a motion to send the emergency fund transfer to the Finance Committee.
For the full 13, 5?
For the 13, 5.
For the 13, 5, I'll make that motion.
Second, motion made and seconded, discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain?
Yes.
Please let the record...
Only because I work for the school district, so...
Please chief abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a wonderful night.
You too.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Approve snow and ice contracts, 2018-19, snow and ice season. Any discussion on contracts for Mark St. Laurent and Andre Souza? Hearing none?
All that paperwork's in, everything's up to date, all allowed.
Okay.
I'll extend the motion.
I'll make that motion, second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Discuss act on creation of open space committee.
Okay, um, the project was a grant that had been applied for by Lauren, and all the paperwork was completed in November, however, when Lauren left in January, we didn't have the staff to carry out the rest of the project, and we've been in contact with SERPAD, and the scope of the project basically is, SERPAD will work with the Board of Selectmen, Claimant, and Conservation to establish an open space and recreation committee that'll lead this process. They're going to gather, analyze, and present information necessary to inform the open space and recreation plan. They're going to do this by doing a survey and have paper responses, and there's also going to be a couple of workshops. SERPAD will compile habitat, water resource, natural and cultural resources, soil and geological information necessary to complete the OSRT, and then they're going to facilitate a workshop and to review the findings, and finally, they'll prepare a series of maps. In order to get the whole process kicked off, the Board does have to appoint a volunteer committee, that's appointed by the Board of Selectmen, sworn in by the Town Clerk. The work of the committee is overseen by the Conservation Agent, which will be Chris, and it often does fall under the oversight of the Planning Board. The mission of the Open Space and Recreation Committee is to update the town's open space and recreation plan, include prioritization, and recommendations for actions to be taken over the life of the plan, which is usually made up of five to seven members, so I guess at this point, what I'm asking is that the Board establish the committee and that we can begin advertising that people want to serve on that committee.
Also, want to set the number of members, I would think, too big a Board's unwieldy, so I would do the five member.
Five would be good.
At least a start.
So basically, you look at all the space in the town and see what's open space, if not?
You probably would want a member from Planning Board, a member from Conservation on there also.
So I'll entertain a motion to go forward with the grant and post, I don't know, post the opening, seeing what's served.
I'll make that motion, with the number being five members, one member from the Conservation Commission, one member from the Planning Board.
I'll second that.
I'm thinking, only because if you're early, going to have two members that are already part of the, part of the Boards and Committees...
It could be one member that's part of both already. Kevin might want to be on it, and he's, he's on Chair of both, both committees, so it'd be even easier if we asked him a few minutes ago.
Right.
We'd only have to have four spots.
I mean, if 20 people come forward, then I think that we can up it to seven, but if we only have like four people come forward, then yeah, obviously we're at five.
Yeah.
I just think that there's probably going to be people that are going to want to be on open space and recreation, but then again, who knows?
Yeah, not a lot of people bang down, down doors for volunteer positions, nobody. We have a lot of open, open positions, which is a plea to you, please. We have plenty of things going on that, in town, that, come on down, volunteer for a couple of open, open positions here.
So I'll, I'll agree to the five, and I agree to the makeup, but I think that if we have a lot of people coming forward, I think we should readdress it at that time. Yeah, okay.
That's fine. So I have a motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. While we're talking about Boards and Committees on the next agenda, if the Chair would say yes, I'd like to bring forward the Economic Development Committee again and talk about that. I think when we start talking about having the feasibility study for the sewer line going down, and that's already been approved, I don't want people to be under the impression that we're going to have big business down there. And I think that if we can have a smaller economic development committee and start to look at what can go down there, I think a lot of people...
We had one, we just never met.
Because we didn't have an opportunity for that, but, I mean, these people might promote it better, you know what I mean? So I think we should look at it again and try to resurrect it.
I would like to be part of that. Because I have, I, I want to engage the business community. My plan was to do that this fall and get in touch with the gentleman from K Pot Aggregates, Mr., I don't know. He's a person there.
Greg O'Brien.
Greg O'Brien. And, and, you know, that's something I really have an interest in, so I'd like to be part of that.
All right, Tim, can you put that on for the next agenda, please? Thank you. Proven sign, public notice for two thousand and nineteen annual town election. Any issues or concerns with that?
We're going to put your name on there automatically?
No, that doesn't work that way. I'll entertain a motion to sign the public notice.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
No, I do, wait, I have something to say. Why do we have...
Please, straight forward.
One, three, two people for finance committee already?
Open spot, one was...
Is somebody leaving, or did somebody just fill in a spot, and now, now we have double open? Is that what's going on? Okay.
So you have the, the one that's being elected, you know, the vacant spot right now, and then someone will have wanted it.
Okay.
Comes back to the, we have plenty of openings. Yeah, I can't think of her name. She left. So her spot was filled, so that has to come back up. Any other questions, concerns, comments?
No, I'll think of something, though. Give me time.
I'll entertain a motion. We did the motion.
Yep.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Signed certificates, certificate of votes for registry of deeds and county commissioner, position in the state's, state elections submitted by Jacqueline Brown. Any questions on that? Any pregnant chads, hanging chads, or anything? Is everything okay? I'll entertain a motion to certify.
Make a motion to certify.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote to allow town administrator David Demont to sign all these documents regarding the two thousand and eighteen Tahoe and the two thousand and eighteen Durango. Are you certified now and all squared away as the procurement officer?
I am. Well, I haven't been certified yet, but I've completed the three courses and have filed for the certification.
Congratulations, you did very well on the test from what I can imagine. So, motion was made by Charlie. Any second on the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And approve amounts of abatements, write-off, payment write-offs for October of two thousand and eighteen.
We have, which they are...
Yep, I'll make, make a motion to approve October twenty eighteen in the amount, for contractual allowances, in the amount of seventy-three thousand, five hundred and four dollars and eighty-seven cents, and write-offs for the month of October in the amount of four thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and four cents, for a total amount of seventy-eight four twelve ninety-one.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? I have a little bit of discussion. We write off a lot. That might be something we want to, I know we're very lenient on it, but...
Now we have a company that does it, so...
I've been talking to some of the other local fire chiefs, and their write-offs, they write off, what we write off a month, they write off a year. So that might be something that, we don't know, I don't know how they're doing it, how strict they are, how many times, how many call cycles they go through, because that's all settable. But that might be something we want to...
So why don't we ask the fire chief to give us a report? We can review it, and then if we have additional questions, we can ask him.
All right. So right now, I'm, we're acting on the motion for seventy-eight four twelve ninety-one. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approve except municipal valuable, valability preparedness MVP grant submitted by planning technician Christopher McKay.
Actually, both of those, the next, this one and the next one are related to each other. Last year, we received a grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars to achieve the MVP climate community designation, which basically, the, the process is to complete a comprehensive baseline climate change and natural resource vulnerability assessment, development of prioritized actions for dealing with priority hazards using the Community Resilience Building Workshop Guide. And we have to select a vendor, a state certified MVP vendor, which Serpad is, in order to, and then they're going to conduct two four-hour workshops or one eight-hour workshop, and they have one public listening session. They're going to characterize the hazards, identify community vulnerabilities and strengths, identifying prioritized community actions, determine overall, overall priority of actions, and then put it all together in a report. The contract was at ten thousand dollars. Once again, this was approved last year. When Lauren left, we didn't have the staff to do this. And I've been speaking with the MVP program as well as with Serpad, and there was a willingness, they wanted to take the money back. I was able to convince them not to do that. But we're also going to be participating with up to other towns with Rochester and Lakeville as part of the grant application. So the basic thing is, number one, we need to agree that we want to do this and sign off on it, and two, sign off on the Serpad agreement to allow them to proceed to do the work that's been outlined in the scope.
I'll make the motion. Read into the contract.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion on the motion? Will this tie in with what we're doing with Wendy Grashaw?
I actually told Wendy about this. I don't know whether, it's, it's sort of related in a way. So, you know, once you get the other committee up and going, you may want to have representatives on, you know, the board or the committee here to, I don't even think it suggests that it's a board. We can involve them as part of the process. I'm sure they'd be, you know, particularly related to energy conservation.
Once it gets underway, I think it'll self-defy itself.
Are you making the motion for both, that and for the southeast? There's two related on the agenda, one for the sign the agreement and the other one to approve, to accept.
I'll make motion on both.
And your second covered both of those? Motion made and seconded, to both sign the agreement and to accept it. Any discussion on the motion hearing, none, all in favor?
Aye.
It's actually to sign the, the grant application.
Sign agreement with South, that's...
With the MVP program, then sign the agreement with Serpad to allow them to do it.
All right, just do a quick motion for us, sign with agreement with Serpad.
Some would.
And second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve Board of Selectmen's Minutes for the meeting for November fifth and November fourteenth. Any...
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Discuss approved reserve fund transfer, I mean, did that? See what happened here? Discuss approved architectural services for the installation of the external commercial freezer box at the Council on Aging Multipurpose Senior Center.
I really didn't realize this is such a big project.
It is, it turns into a big project, actually. We started this...
Just like everything.
We started this project with the previous building inspector. We hired an engineer, and he did the concrete spec. However, after discussing the project with Jeff and, and talking about the skills, there's a whole bunch of trades in here that we didn't really anticipate in terms of concrete, electrical work, carpentry, duct work, and actually specking out the individual freezer box. I contacted Compass, Andy DiGamo, to take a look at it, and we've been talking about it, and Bruce Willis is in favor of it. He, Bruce and I have discussed it and have been working on it. I'd like a permission to expend three thousand dollars for the purpose of developing the bid specifications for the project. The concern I have is, is that the box needs to go in over here on the side of the building. We need to cut into the foundation of the building. There's carpentry work, so there's a door from the interior of the building into the freezer box. There's duct work that needs to be done, and electrical work that needs to be done to make sure that the box is able to, you know, function as a freezer box.
This was approved at town meeting. How much was it approved for a tool? Do we know?
Not off the top of my head. I want to say it was like forty thousand dollars, if I remember correctly.
For a freezer?
I thought it was like twelve thousand.
Yeah.
Oh, all right, okay, maybe not.
I'm just, I don't know if we, we're going to, how much we're going to blow through that budget above and beyond that budget.
I thought this was just like a freezer.
Oh, they wanted a big walk-in.
I knew they wanted a big walk-in, but I didn't, I mean...
It's a walk-in freezer, it's going to be outside that they're going to be able to walk in.
And you're going to either dig into the bank because it goes up slope, or you have to put it in the front of the building.
Well, they're, they're talking about putting it in the front of the building. We talked about moving...
Wrong level.
And then the...
They want to walk through from the kitchen into the freezer.
And the propane tank is on the other side, so we can't put it in. There are a whole bunch of issues that have come up in trying to do that.
We can push it off to the next meeting if you want.
No, my, my, I think we feel like we're never prepared. Like, it just, everything just keeps, like...
If you remember correctly, this wasn't, I originally thought it was going to be built in here. They're going to take some space away, and they thought the space in here was too valuable for the moment. It's the beginning, and they wanted something external.
So when town meeting sets a budget, it has to kind of go by that budget? Because that's, town meeting has set that budget. Now, it can't keep growing until, I mean, unless we have an unforeseen circumstance, like, okay, now you're saying, well, it needs all this engineering and blah, blah, blah.
But I think the person that was in charge of it last is gone now, and he really dropped the ball and didn't carry the ball.
He basically left it.
So that's some of the issue.
So I'm hoping that when we have, like, other capital projects this year, that it truly will be reviewed by the building inspector before bringing it forward, so we're not caught off guard, because I feel like we've been caught off guard with a couple of things lately.
Absolutely, and I think the building's...
It's just ridiculous. Okay. I don't know where the money's coming from. It's going to come from reserve. You're going to have to go for a reserve fund transfer if there's no money in that line item. And that's unforeseen.
More than would come out of that line item, though, because it's, it's going towards install the freezer. That freezer is...
If it, if we have enough money in there to cover that, then absolutely, we wouldn't need a reserve. But if it, if there's not enough money...
That's why I may mention it, because that's what Scott had originally proposed. He had hired an engineer to do the concrete part of it, and he, the guy, I mean, it just took time for him to do it. And we started talking about, well, the concrete is only a small part of that project. It's not simply a matter, it has to be, you know, dug down, has to have a frost wall.
But doesn't, don't these come as pre-dones? I mean, restaurants have these all the time next to their kitchens.
The way they're proposing is putting in a, well, we've looked at other communities, and they usually put it on a concrete pad. There isn't a need to have, you know, a special electrical service to it. The carpentry work comes in from having to cut the hole in the building. The masonry work comes in because where they're going to put the box, they actually have to cut into the foundation because the foundation is need-walled.
You can't enter into the building without cutting the foundation.
Yeah, so now we're talking about a totally different project than dropping a box outside the building and plugging it in.
I was against this from the beginning, but we went through with it because they wanted it and it's going on town meeting.
Right, and I was under the impression it was X amount of dollars and just a freezer.
I'd rather see an RFP written up, and give the specs and see what the bids come in, or you come up with, this is the money, and this is all we get, this is what you get for that money.
That's what Andy's going to do. Andy's going to do the technical part of it in terms of defining, because these are trades, too. You have to be very specific in terms of what you're communicating that you want done so that everybody can, on an equal basis, bid on the same project.
But you might not be able to get, for the money you have allotted, you might not be able to get everything you want. It might be a freestanding freezer they have to walk in from the outside into, and not tied into the building and cut it.
We can do it as an option. We can, we can do it standalone, we can do it as a freezer that, that, you know, we can do alternate one, which would be the freezers outside on a platform that they have to walk into and lock. We can do it, option two, with the freezer being a part of the building and all the additional work that's associated with it.
I mean, I, I see a space there that's never used. I don't know what it'd be used for, it's storage for the most part, that could be built into.
Yeah, I don't know.
I see a closet right there that could be built into, you know?
Right.
To be have outside to be heating and cool, not heating, but to cooling a place that's going to be outside ninety degrees, so you have to insulate it to protect it from all that. It's way above and beyond, and I don't know how much, how much big, big of a space they need.
Right.
So...
No, I agree.
I, I, I'm not coming to make decisions tonight until I know what numbers...
I can, I can get more...
Let's find out what the line item is, and...
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't think, I didn't pull that out.
Yeah, because I don't, I don't want to say for everybody, but I'm not so sure that we will have said yes to forty thousand dollars for one freezer.
It was a...
I think there were a bunch of other things...
It wasn't a town meeting vote, so the money is there, sitting, sitting there for something.
But I think it's for other things, too. I think it was for the freezer, for the senior center, and other things.
We'll have to read the article.
Yeah.
For some reason, that number just stuck.
Can we pull that article up, Tim, when you get a chance tomorrow, and see what the article specifically says?
Yeah, let's...
If you can find the minutes for that meeting, too. If they ask for...
So that wasn't done as part of the capital plan, but a separate article?
Separate article.
Which...
Some things don't go up to, they just come up with a number. People come up with a number and say, we need twenty-five thousand dollars for this. And it doesn't mean that they can get what they want for twenty-five thousand dollars. It's just a number that comes up with. This has happened before in different departments.
Right, and that's one of the reasons why we said no to the car, right? Because it all doesn't make any sense, but, no, but I mean, those are the things that, you know, we look at, and we're like, wait, it doesn't make sense, you're, you're not going to get a car for twenty-five.
Research it, tell us what the real number is, and we'll give you what, we'll recommend what you, what you need.
This is the other reason why we always ask for that to be part of the capital building plan, right? So we, it's reviewed by whomever, the building inspector, the electrical, the plumbing people, to say, you're going to need this, or you're not going to need that. And then when they put it in the budget, it's already in the budget, and we're not to go back and ask for more money. We know it's there.
I mean, I, I, some of it is dropping the ball on the past building inspector, that he was supposed to get this project going two years ago, and now we're playing catch-up, because nobody knows what happened and where we are, but...
Yeah.
So I, we're not going to act on that tonight?
All right. I will get the information available, and I'll send it out to the board members.
Thank you. Town administrator, Paul?
I don't have a heck of a lot. I just wanted the board to let us know that we've all been, Tim, Ally, and I are all been approved to be notaries. So in the future, when we need something signed as a notary at a meeting, we can do that. The OPEB agreement has been finalized, you've, the board endorsed it. We're going to be meeting with Bartholomew in December and working on the OPEB fund strategy. I got a department head meeting coming up twelve nineteen. I got a finance team twelve twelve. And if there's anything the board wants me to talk about with them, I'd be happy to do that. So that's pretty much it.
So we are getting late into, into budget discussions, and we probably should come up at the timeline of how we're going to go forward with that.
I can do that.
So I think we should...
These are about in December, I believe.
Yep, so that needs to be done. And then let's get a game plan from the finance committee and see how they want to work it this year, if they're going to work together or if they're going to work separately from us.
And you can stress that in the past, they came to meet with us and met when we met with the department heads and got the requests and had, could ask the questions at the same time, and we could all be on the same page.
Yep. But... That's more efficient, because now you're not having the department heads coming out twice and hearing different things at different times.
Right, so maybe at your financial management team, you can at least stop some of those discussions and...
We've actually, we've actually started already talking about the twenty twenty budget.
It's just clear for us and it's clear for the people that know that we're on the same page and we've discussed the same things than this...
Right.
I don't want to say adversarial, but almost adversarial. It's, it's not, it shouldn't be. We can all discuss this and come up with a budget that's, works for everybody.
How, how would the board feel about having, like, one Saturday where we went through all the budgets with the finance committee and the board president?
It's going to be after a while.
It's too long. I mean, we've tried to do just police and fire. We've tried to do, you know what I mean?
No, I understand that. I've been, you know, a lot of communities do it the way we're doing it, but I would think it might be more efficient for, if both boards were there, we had one day, get it done, and then everybody gets the same information, and we're all moving.
Sometimes bite-sized pieces are what we need then.
I just feel like after an hour, two hours, you're like spent. But... I mean, we could review everything and finalize everything on a Saturday, but not to stop, not to stop and finish all on a Saturday.
I'm going to, like I did last year, I'm going to sit down with each of the individuals, the department heads, prior to them making their presentations, just so we can, I can get, gathering some of the additional information that needs, you know, the board might need in, in terms of putting the budget together.
Ignorance, we're going to receive a two thousand and nineteen class two, three motor vehicle graveyard, auctioneer, entertainment, and assorted license licenses. Have we got everybody in yet?
I have about half of them. I'm going to be sending out postcards tomorrow, because the deadline to get them in is next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, okay.
There are kind of a small flood of them coming in today, so...
When do you anticipate putting along an agenda?
Typically, we do it out the first meeting in December, so twelve three.
Any questions, concerns, comments from the board? When we do, can we make sure there are complaints against anybody that has a license? Any issues, any outstanding issues on that stuff, so we can make an informed decision, hopefully. Personnel board?
All right, first up, we have a certificate of appointment for Christopher McKay, also a board clerk.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just to point clarity, it's seventeen ninety-six is the clerk.
That's going to be on the next, oh, has anyone already changed his status yet?
That's what, okay. Yeah, you're, you're right, I'm sorry.
But no problem.
It's in front of me, that's why. It's, I'll, motion made and...
No, you seconded.
I'll, I'll second that, I'm sorry.
And any discussion other than... Hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then the next would be his change of status.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second seventeen ninety-six. Now, can I say a question?
All right, motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is, uh, the change of status form for Linda Remini's, uh, senior clerk, department fire department, uh, going to a rate of sixteen ninety-two.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The only other thing I have is, um, we have a new used ladder truck from the fire department and it came from Alabama and deputy chief Harry Ashley, someone's gonna have to help with, exactly, firefighter's actually last name, but I couldn't remember it all, went down, they, they did get paid their day, but they went down to Alabama and brought it back, um-
And Harry, Harry came back, he didn't stay?
He did stay, I must have told you that, he had, well, I don't know, um, and, uh, so I'd just like to have a letter of recognition to those two gentlemen because they put out more than twenty-four hours that they did pay.
Tim, can you take care of that?
They, they saved that, they, they probably saved us thousands of dollars.
They had a little bonding experience.
Yes, oh, yes. Yep, all right.
Board of Health, there was nothing on for the Board of Health, new business, special town meeting Sunday, Saturday, December first, Free Town Elementary School from ten AM to six PM, please come out and vote, and dates of upcoming selectance meeting, Monday, December third, Monday, December seventeenth, Monday, January seventh, and Tuesday, the twenty-second, and that's all the business that's in front of the board, executive session, Mass General Law Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A Four, to discuss the deployment of strategy regarding security personnel, I'm gonna read them all, we'll vote on them all, and if there's any abstentions, we can abstain from that specific one, Mass General Law Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A Three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, if an open meeting law may have detrimental effect on the litigation position of a public body and the chair so declares Jeremy Barnado versus Town of Free Town Highway Department, Town of Free Town Board of Selectmen and Charles Mack, um, and Mass General Law Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A Three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on litigation position of a public body, and this chair does so declare, oh, can I have a motion go for all three?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made and seconded, to that executive session as noted, and discussion on the motion, here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Sullivan.
Okay, I, uh, aye on the first two abstaining.
Thank you.
Problem, uh, quick question before, um, did you say, I said November fifth meeting, but the license renewal Excel hearing was next week or?